Ladies and gentlemen, committee members, I can't actually start the agenda till seven o'clock. I do have an intro which does take a couple of minutes, which I shall just read out to everybody. Welcome to the Work in Borough Council's Planning Committee. So a few points before we commence. As you notice, we've got a personal audio address assistant. Mobile phones, please check they're switched off or silent, and there is no fire drill planned for this evening. The proceedings are filmed and will be available on the WBC website, as you can see where the camera is there. The committee members, council officers and registered speakers will normally be recorded, but speakers may ask not to be filmed, but their comments will be audio recorded. The planning committee is made up of nine elected members, and as usual, I shall ask each of the members just to introduce themselves and say what all they're from. Wayne? Well, Wayne Smith, member first.
Michelle Shepherd, the Vane member, please.
Madame Richards, member Norrice.
Tim Holden-Holden from Lowry Alley.
John Kaiser from Barkham.
Phil Stone from Lothern Woodley.
Chris Barrett, Reverend of Workim.
Thank you, and we are supported and advised by a variety of professional council officers. Now I'll ask those to introduce themselves, nothing on the mark.
Good evening, my name is Mary, several high solicitors are applying to the committee tonight.
My name's Arbelia Delaclo.
Connor Corrigan, the STL manager.
Chris Stilke, service manager for Highways.
To my left are the planning officers presenting tonight's applications, and I will introduce those at the relevant point. This is a quasi-judicial committee with formal set procedures and conduct. Firstly, the planning officer will present each application. Then I will call in turn only those who have pre-registered to speak. Please come forward to the table, the microphone is controlled by the grey button on the base. The time limit is three minutes for each category of speaker, and this will be strictly enforced, so please ensure you get your key points across within your allotted time. Members of the committee are interested in the quality of what you have to say, not for how long you speak. I emphasise that only those who are pre-registered may speak, no others, including town or parish councillors, agents, applicants, objectors or supporters, are permitted to address the committee, ask questions or interrupt the meeting. Following the planning officer's presentation and the comments of the registered speakers, the planning committee members will consider, question and seek clarification for the application and hopefully reach a decision which may or may not agree with the planning officer's recommendation. Finally, a reminder that the local planning authority's role is to determine any valid planning application using local and national planning policy. Our role is not to suggest alterations to schemes, whether they are a good idea or needed, whether they are too costly or whether there are alternative uses. Thank you, and now, as it has gone seven o'clock, I can move on to the formal agenda. First item on the agenda is the election of the vice-chair. Before we go to the election, I would like my thanks noted for the previous vice-chair, Chris Singleton, who stepped down. His attention to detail at the chairman's briefing was legendary. I will miss his contribution at committee and support, ensuring that it all ran smoothly. Going forward, I would like to nominate councillor John Kaiser as vice-chair. Having been a colleague for many years, I am confident of his ability to be a very able vice-chair. And would look for someone to second that, Chris is second, thank you. Are there any other nominations? No? We just have a show of hands saying that we're happy with John, thank you. Welcome to them, John, please sit next to me.
Can I just say thank you to the members for the faith shown to me? I hope I live up to your expectations, good job.
Apologies, Arba?
Just fancy folks there.
Thank you. Right, next item then is the minutes of the previous meeting. I do have one thing that we need to amend, and that Lindsay Jennings, the solicitor, was present at the meeting, so we need to add her. Are there any other changes to the minutes? We're happy with them? Yes?
That's great, thank you.
Right, does anyone need to declare an interest?
Yes, I'd like to declare an interest for the Arborfield application, which is 16288, I know the applicant, and he works very hard for the village and it would be very difficult for me to be objective in this case. Also, the Arborfield Garrison one, which is actually in my room, Barkham, there is a mention, chairman, there's a comment from there, but since that comment, we've had a meeting with the developers, myself and the parish council, and a number of the issues that were concerns have been resolved, although not everything, but so I believe I can make a judgment based on the information presented tonight.
Are there any applications to be deferred or withdrawn? Thank you. Right, we go down onto the first application, which is Agenda item 89 on page nine, which is the Arborfield Garrison. It's a full application for a temporary planning permission for a change of use to a film studio. It's before the committee, it's a major application, and it's recommended for approval, subject to conditions. The case officer is Alex Swates, I shall hand over the head. Thank you.
Thank you, chairman, good evening all. I'm presenting application 162881 at the Arborfield Garrison, which is the application for temporary planning permission for the use of land for filming, incorporating change of use for the existing form of barracks building and the use of hard standing for parking and storage. The proposal includes access of Landley Common Road, and the applicant for this proposal is Chris Nicholson, Operations Limited. Before getting into the specifics of the proposal in front of you, it's worth just touching on the Arborfield's STL and the previous approved outline beforehand. The outline for the northern section of Arborfield was approved in April 2015, and this was for up to 2,000 new dwellings, including the associated infrastructure. So that includes things such as primary schools, secondary schools and district centres. This slide shows the wider strategic map of the Arborfield STL, and I highlighted some key roads and routes around the site. Of particular importance to this application is Langley Common Road, which is located in the north-west corner. Onto the actual proposal, as I've discussed, there is currently an approved outline application on the wider side of 2,000 units. Included in this outline permission is a phasing strategy that allows different parcels and certain elements of infrastructure to come forwards at phase times, as clearly hit the site handfuls we've built out of once. The premise of this application is that the area where the film studios is located is not expected to come forwards until well after the first phase of development. Therefore, the proposal is to allow CREST to use the vacant buildings on Garrison for a specific use until it has time to deliver the residential units on that site. Not only will this provide increased security as a whole on the Arborfield Garrison site, but it also creates local jobs. I want to make it clear, however, that the end game in this area is residential units. A condition is on proposal to remove of this use after nine years, so that these parcels can be delivered as per the approved outline. Also, just to be noted, the implementation of this proposal does not affect the outline application in any way. So this is the site layout, and as you can see, it's the most northwestern corner of the STL, and there are no physical differences to what's currently existing. The proposal doesn't involve any structural development on site, and will make use of the large hangars and workshops that are currently in situ. So moving on, moving on to look at some more of the details of the applications, we'll start with working hours. Since the first submission, we've worked with CREST to amend the working hours to the application, and these are again secured by condition. Of particular note is that the majority of the proposed arrows reflects those previously approved on the outline application, with the only exceptions being the filming hours. CREST have provided information about a similar scheme that they have at Longcross Studios, which is in Runnymede, for filming and have provided the typical nine-month filming process. This essentially documents how the use of the site slowly builds up to a two-mile peak and then drops down thereafter. We've also contacted Runnymede ourselves to ask about if there's any issues they've had regarding noise, and no issues have been highlighted. The main issue for us to consider is how these impact the local properties. When considering particularly the filming section of the working hours, the understanding is that stage one and stage two highlighted on this slide will be the main areas for significant filming. As you can see, these are the largest stages and located directly at the heart of the site. These stages are located over 500 metres away from properties on Langley Common Road, and therefore, particularly with the hours being controlled by condition, there is not considered to be a significant impact on the neighbouring properties. Moving on to the highway side of things, the access to the site is located off Langley Common Road and is using existing access into the Garrison. The access will be enhanced and will include the new footway and work to the verges to allow for safe sightlines. It's worth noting that we asked for a safety audit to take place during the application, and when that came about, the highway team were satisfied with the outcome. Finally, onto the parking, the site contains 240 designated spaces and 200 overspill spaces. The majority of the parking spaces are shown as red on this map, and they are managed daily. However, given the size of the site, there is also scope for parking next to workshops and stages. This is what we call the overspill parking. The provision at Runnymede Film Studios, the example given earlier, equates to a similar level of provision, however, on our site, there is a benefit of added overspill places on top. Therefore, the parking, again, is acceptable. Before I conclude, just to quickly go through the members' update. On the first page, there's clarification required of the Barkham council's views following the resubmission of details. Equally, there is an additional neighbour letter that was received after the report and was published, so that's been added to the members' update, as well as a office note after that. Therefore, in conclusion, the proposal is recommended for approval, subject to the conditions in the report and the members' update.
Thank you. Right, the first registered speaker then is Ken Lane, I believe is a local resident, is that correct?
Thank you, chairmen, thank you, members. I think it's quite good news that the site will be used for arms simply to collect here for nine years, so in general, I think people are in favour of this development. But as none of us have any spirits of living next to film studios, it's important that the conditions attached foresee any problems over the next nine years. Our initial objections concerning the working hours on the site have been addressed in the changes put forward by the applicant. However, residents need to be assured that the nearest building is being used as stages, halls, I think four and five, will not be the main focus of any overnight working. The other main concern is the access from Langley Common Road, which is previously rarely used except by tanks. It's immediately opposite with the entrances for an empty garage, a tyre depot for commercial and other vehicles, a car sales area, other businesses, and for residents of Oaklands Park. The safety audit referred to earlier addresses the design of the access within the context of the road, but surprisingly does not identify any problems, despite there being obvious potential conflict. HGVs are often seen reversing out of station tyres and cars are parked on the W lines by the sales area. A 30 mile an hour limit reduced from 40 would help residents, who apparently isn't the matter for this application. However, Langley Common Road is a main route and you're bound to secondary school, and the whole of Barkham Road leading into Langley Common Road, except for a stalk short stretch before School Road, is now 30 mile an hour as a result. In the traffic statement addendum dated 21 December 2016, the applicant's consultant deals with these, this is at 3.1.5 to 3.1.7. To paraphrase what it says, "A new roundabout at Langley Common Road, Big Slade, will be accompanied by a traffic reduction order reducing speed on Langley Common Road to 30 mile per hour east of the roundabout, plus other measures. This will reduce speed near film studio access and subject to discussion with Work in Borough Council, if intended, the speed limit reduction will extend the entirety of Langley Common Road." The final part of Act 3.1.7 said, "The stage one road safety audit will finally lead improvement" will be submitted as a part of this application. As a resident, I'm puzzled as to whether the improvements in 3.1.5 and 3.1.6 are part of this application as well as or separate from the infrastructure development. Whichever way, can we be assured that reducing the speed limit in Langley Common Road along its whole length to 30 mile an hour is either forming part of one or other development or be sought by WBC Highway staff as part of the safety audit to Boham School, the proposed new primary school on the northern part of the STL, and general improvements following the construction of a new roundabout at the Big Slade junction and improving the safety of residents in relation to a new film production unit. Thank you, thank you.
Right, next we have Chris Tinkers, Chris Nicholson, agent.
There's a short series of slides, is it right? Address the screen.
Ashley, can you just pose your...
Chairman and members, thank you very much for the opportunity to address you briefly. It was mentioned that we have a similar facility at Longcross, and I thought it would just help to support the application for you to see a little bit about what this scheme involves. This is 310 acres in the Greenbelt, butting Wenworth Golf Course, with neighbours on three sides. The site was bought in 2004 and has a million square feet, redundant buildings not dissimilar to the scheme at Arborfield Garrison. It's a garden village designated for 1,500 dwellings, and we're on with development of both commercial and residential. Like Arborfield, it has some large format buildings, and those large format buildings have been used, and we discovered this by accident to support the creative arts. Here you'll see Call the Midwife, Clash of the Titans, Skyfall. These are the type of films that are filmed within the curfewage of these large buildings. And at Longcross, we've created 500 jobs, and the interesting thing is that whilst for a day, 500 actors might come in, really what we support are animators, special effects studios, professionals such as carpenters, makeup artists, hairdressers, and so this is a very diverse employment base. At the moment, Murder on the Orient Express, for example, is being filmed in a building very similar to the helicopter hangar at Arborfield. Yes, we're building residential next door, and we are, as a company, happy for our residents to live cheap by gale with this operation. So at Arborfield, as I've already said, we have similar scale of buildings, and just to give you an insight, this is the openness of the existing buildings that are on site, and you can see a lot of similarities to the type of filming. They like big, clear studio space. And the plan is being illustrated to you, and I'm not here to talk about the filming times etcetera, but we have the opportunity to create an employment base here for the next nine years. And the sort of benefits are that it's employment generating, it supports the ongoing business rates, because otherwise we would probably have to knock these buildings down. There's controlled hours of operation, we've never had one complaint in the whole time that we've operated at Longcross, and I think I was pleased to hear the council agreed with that. The traffic use is lower than previous, now I know that people think that when the traffic has left, that's it and there's a new pattern comes along, but it isn't as aggressive as the previous use. And we're happy for this to operate alongside our own residents that we're moving in, and it is actively staffed and managed by very experienced build managers. And as a concluding slide, as was shown earlier, this is the area on the masterplan, the consented masterplan. It's between 300 and 350 residential dwellings, we're aware that the STL in total is 4,000 dwellings. So we can operate this for nine years very successfully without interfering with the progress of the residential development. So thank you for hearing me and hope that was helpful to illustrate the type of opportunity there is here to support the creative arts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I come on to the committee, so just a couple of points raised, which I'd just like to direct Chris to, there was sort of traffic. So could you just comment on the access, the 30 mile an hour speed limit, the road safety audit, and finally, just clarify which development it's part of that safety audit?
Yep. In terms of, I'll try to call this in that kind of right order. In terms of the access itself, the access is an existing access whilst obviously it's not currently in use at the moment. If, obviously, the community based is still in operation, they can open that access and use it at any point, there's no restrictions on that. Therefore, obviously, looking at the access as it stands, the application is here for this access to be opened up and used, obviously, on a temporary basis for the nine years of the film studio. We did ask for a road safety audit, because obviously, as far as our view is, we're happy to take our assessment of that audit and that junction itself, but obviously, we have an audit undertaken to give a kind of a third party independent assessment of it to kind of help give some clarity tonight. And we're happy, I mean, it didn't find any issues, which was where we were currently at. The vegetation, as the access is existing, the vegetation should be cleared to achieve the visibility required. The 40 mile an hour is acceptable for the junction that is in front of us, and is acceptable to be used. Leading on to the 30 mile an hour, we understand, yes, there has been a call for the local parish and residents to obviously have that road reduced to 30 miles an hour, regardless of this development in place. And it's something that due through speed service etcetera, the police wouldn't support without some measures in place to help reduce those speeds. Coming forward through the Arborfield Garrison application, the CREST delivering, the Langley Common Road Big Slade roundabout, which is part of the outline by part of reserve matters associated with the overall scheme, that's being delivered, and the works extend 30 mile an hour off of the length of that along Langley Common Road towards the entrance of this site. Now, whilst I said this access is fine for the proposers in front of us, the council is looking at Langley Common Road into Barkham with the design team that are delivering that roundabout to see if there's the possibility to extend the 30 mile an hour further into the village. But as this junction stands with this application in front of us, the access is acceptable for the use as proposed at 40 mile an hour, along with the footpath connection that already is provided along that length. Taking into account the junctions that are existing opposite, you have got the garage, correct, and obviously the Cameron Park, as well as this existing access. The view is that, again, this existing access, it could be opened, and whilst, I appreciate the safety audit, obviously, went and had a look at the site and it was on a quiet day, the levels of traffic, which obviously have been assessed for the whole scheme, as well as this, we feel that is acceptable. In terms of the full movements, granted, there is obviously an area of movements taking place in close proximity, however, there's nothing unusual for this type of road or this type of development. And there is no fixed peak hour, A and P, with the use that's coming in front of us. There will be peak movements, but generally, it's kind of spread through the use of that development site and what film studio is proposing. I think that's covered it.
You've covered it, that's been very fair and thorough, thank you. Right, I'll just come to John then, as board member.
Thank you, Tim. I did say I would pick Harting 16281, but I was so excited about getting the new job, I meant being in 3115. Thank you very much. Just a number of questions, I welcome the efforts being put in by the council. I really would like to see the 30 mile an hour speed limit along that road there. With regards to the certificate of law from this after 10 years, if this was to be extended for, say, a year, would they be able to apply for a certificate for lawful use?
No, they wouldn't, they don't apply for another application straight after, if they wanted to keep on. So it would be through the same process as we are now, even for one year.
Okay, but it doesn't establish precedent, because I obviously want to see how this air in the long term. Okay. The other thing is, I welcome the fact that they're doing something with the land rather than just leaving it barren. And the entrance onto Langley Road, it was never intended as part of the outline plans of the Arborfield Garrison, that there would be an entrance onto. This doesn't establish precedent for an access onto Langley Road?
No, it doesn't, no.
That's all I mean, that's fine, thank you.
Question for you, Alex. How many homes were we expecting to be built on the proposal you have in front of us tonight?
It's very hard to tell, simply because the detail hasn't come forward. Today, we've probably got about 350-ish houses so far, so at some point, they're going to have to come up to that 2,000 mark. When that happens, it would be, they'd have to submit the detail first for us to know how many units are going to be in there.
So, in our overall assessment in our STLs to 2026, we were expecting a certain number to come from this site. If we grant a nine-year licence on the existing use of the film studio, that could cut us short by achieving our target to 2026. So we would need some reassurance that, I don't think nine years is possible, because nine years take us up to 2026. If we give permission for nine years, then we're not going to get those houses, regardless of how many, even if it's 300. It may seem to be seven years, which allows them time to build the houses that we're expecting, otherwise we've got to build those houses somewhere else.
Yep, sorry, I'll jump in. The limited scheme's clearly nine years, so it does bring us up to that. In terms of the number of units, we're talking about probably, looking at the sites, probably between 300 and 400 units on that bit, when you take in public open space and things like that into account. So we don't have any problems with, in terms of the housing land supply issue, with that taking up that, because it was always at the end phases of development. There's an element of contingency built in with the slippage, which you always get slippage from your, especially recessions and things like this. And this scheme is always going to go through probably another recession before it gets built. So in terms of the slippage in the numbers overall, we don't have a problem with that. We, other sites are taking up more development areas, so in terms of housing, so it's actually, we've got that made up in the process, so it is accounted for in our assessment of the nine years.
So, when you approved this originally then, when did you expect all the houses to be built on this side?
Well, sorry. Originally, we were expecting it to start sooner, for that's with most sites in the borough. But basically, in terms of the full, if you go back to when the core strategy was done, which is obviously put some time going in, that was always assumed 2026 was where everything would get built. We have, we have got slippage in the system, and that always happens. But we can account for that, additional 300, 400 units elsewhere. And so we don't have a problem with housing land supply coming forward. So although you take this out of that section, you've got the Marina Family Trust, which is obviously now approved, and got to come forward hopefully quite soon. We have other sites around the borough that make up our housing land support. So it's not an issue in terms of, we suddenly get to a point where we have 400 units shorts and we get a planning appeal saying, "We haven't got these", so we could make it up. We get those appeals all the time anyway, but we will make it up, so we don't have a concern about not delivering these houses in October.
Michelle?
Following on from that, we are having to have 200 extra houses a year built because of the lack of building before 2013, inadequate amounts to make up our land supply. Is this affected in any way? Again, you're saying it's not going to, but where are we going to put the other houses? Second question, absolutely unrelated to that, we're likely to be hiring local apprentices. We'd like to see our local young people to have jobs in this area as well, and it would be a great place for them to develop some new talents and to use local... Less traffic on the road, do you feel you're getting here easier?
Again, on the first point, I mean, we've obviously got an allocation that's set out within the core strategy, which was set some time ago. And these houses were always going to be delivered in the last phases. And you have, as again I say, you have slippage when you have recessions, and that's built into the numbers generally. And so the houses were never going to come forward before that, and the market would dictate that anyway. So the fact that it's not coming in that period, we're never going to get those houses anyway, because that was always the last phase. So in terms of how we account for them within the overall housing need within the borough, we're happy with that, we think it's not a problem. And if it was, we would raise this and we wouldn't be supporting it basically. We thought we were going to cause ourselves issues in seven years' time or eight years, nine years' time, to not do it. So again, there's no guarantee they're going to be built in that period anyway, because it's market defences, it's up to CREST whether they do it. And so that's not a problem for us. And in terms of the local employment issue, which I just know about, I can actually answer that, but I presume the film studio, given the scale of the type of employment that's offered, you get a lot of local employment, but perhaps Chris could maybe answer that with regards to Longcross a bit better? Hello, Chris, can you answer Longcross today?
Hello, Chris, can you answer Longcross, do they?
So the one thing we do find is that filming is highly unionised because it has very specialist, I'll say employee characteristics. And so most of the people who come for the actual filming are already structured actors and they have their own, if you like, apprenticeships schemes away from the scheme. So it's not an embedded part of the scheme itself. So an actor will come and work there for two weeks and then leave. Because of course you can't run an apprenticeship scheme when the people are either very nature transient, they come for two weeks, the film is finished and they leave. So the filming companies themselves run the apprenticeship schemes.
Shall we get another question?
Same idea, for the animators, for the I T work, for all of the background work, not necessarily for acting, but for other work on this site. Can we have some assurances that we try to get young people locally to do some of these jobs?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Lane did make a comment about the route to the schools. We've got two schools there, we've got the Coombes that would use that and also Bowham, which is going to grow considerably during the period of the nine years. Are you happy that it's going to be a safe route for those children along Langley Common Road, bearing in mind that there's a very narrow bridge that they've got to come across? Is there any sort of thoughts on site lanes to improve their safety?
I understand where you're coming from, well that's, those schools aren't related to the scheme in front of us. In terms of the footpath that exists on Langley Common Lane, Langley Common Road, they're on the opposite side to this junction, so they wouldn't necessarily be crossing or being involved in anything related to the scheme. But I take your point, I definitely got a feedback. We have the council looking at obviously the school routes etcetera, thirty mile hour extension as the works in front of us. But that's, I think as far as I can take that with this application, but yeah.
Malcolm?
It's a detail more about the filming than the building, but it's an issue of bad noise. We were saying earlier that all the specialists are working inside with computer systems and so on. Presumably, if they were making a film that involved two hundred people, lots of noise, they wouldn't necessarily all be screaming for several hours. I imagine the sound would be put on afterwards, would it not internally? So you're not going to have play parts going on in the car park?
In terms of the operation they have, they would have, I mean, don't get me wrong, I've never been on film set, so I don't know. I'm just talking the knowledge of what I've given from press on this. But in terms of the film sets, you'd have most of them be indoors. So you'd have, during the normal working hours, you'd have people outside building sets, doing all that kind of thing. So the noisy operations are generally within the normal hours of consent and you'd probably find that a lot easier less than a building site going on next to you. So we don't envisage there to be a huge problem with people screaming, but I presume all of that happens elsewhere and is digitally put on, but I couldn't tell you. But in terms of what we've got in front of us, we're not overly concerned about the levels of noise generated because, especially outside of the normal hours, because we've got in place the areas of restriction for starters, all the actual noisy operations, second construction, moving equipment, that should all be done during those normal hours, which will just blend into the background, to be honest, of the rest of the building site. We've also got, as Chris mentioned, we have Crest developing houses next to it. So it's in their interest, they'll be managing the site on behalf of the D I O for the film studios. So it's in their interest to not create lots of noise and disturbance. And in essence, we have Crest, we have good dialogue with Crest, ongoing dialogue. So if problems arise, we can certainly sort them out. They're obviously sitting on the steering group where we discuss problems there. So in terms of our ability to maintain a decent relationship with the neighbouring properties, I don't envisage that being a problem because we have that, we have, as I say, a very good relationship with Crest and it's in their best interest to make sure nothing is happening on site that's causing disturbance. So they're future occupiers and they're occupiers themselves.
Okay, thank you. Members, are there any other questions? Oh, I just have one then. The original housing application was asked for three years. So will they have to come back with another application when this temporary one is ended?
No, so the outline has already been implemented, it's already been started. So as soon as this is finished, they can just continue on with that.
They do need reserve markets for that parcel. So sorry, yeah, sorry. So the outline is consented, the overall site is consented, but when they come back to obviously put the housing on that site, they need a new application as reserve markets and discharge conditions and things of the sort. So it would be a process to get.
Thank you. Okay, Members, on page ten then, the recommendation is approval with the conditions as set out in the agenda. And then in the Members' update, there is a amendment to condition three. So please have a show of hands for all those in favour of recommending this for approval. And that's the most of us, all one. And those against? One against. Thank you very much, so that application is approved.